You all have.
Yeah.
What?
This, this is a worthy debate. I was supposed to be. Why wasn't it? I want to start this meeting, uh, we'll start by the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, our God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all. Play along, we said. Okay, thanks. Anyway, would you please call the.
Mr. Yago. Mr. Fulton.
President.
Mr. Nordike.
Here.
Mr. Wilhelm.
President.
Ms. Patterson, here, we have a quorum.
Thank you, and visitors.
Yanka.
Perry Peters. And we have Elliot on the phone, I don't know, do we have anybody else?
No.
We got Neil.
Neil's here. Well, Neil, I'm sorry, you're not a visitor, are you?
He's a paid visitor.
He's a paid visitor. Paid, paid, paid. That's gonna be a new policy by the town, we're gonna pay people to attend. You have to be a resident.
That's bribery.
You have to be a resident. It's a dollar a meeting. There you go.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we're going to, the order of business is we're going to consider request to approve allocation of funds uh, to the mainstream business uh, for a holiday committee for decorations. Who's doing that presentation beyond our meeting?
He's been pregnant.
Who?
Lauren.
Oh.
Lauren B. too.
Yanka gave a good presentation.
Yeah, I just did it. It was, it was a good. Oh, yeah, that's right, you weren't here.
When did you do this presentation?
On the, on the Tuesday board meeting, and we were gonna vote. Uh, but we couldn't vote, we, we, you guys. And so basically, some of the suggestions from that, my, we really had a nice discussion. Uh, we, we incorporated, and so it's basically just to make sure that we did what you guys asked, and then to actually vote on. Is my understanding.
Okay, very good. Um, well, I wasn't at that meeting, but that's quite all right, if the board was here and they heard the presentation and uh, they support it, then um, I, I support it too. What's this?
That's the.
That's, yeah, it's a, it's a project summary, and then, and then.
Yes.
Do you want me to recap real quick?
If you'd like, sure.
Well, do, would you like, maybe everyone else was here to say?
Damn right.
Okay. All right, so, so basically, business roundtable group is meeting every other Monday. We briefly touched on it two months ago, or month and a half ago, or whatever, the first meeting, you know, I think you were here. So, we, we, we had a discussion about um, using some funds from the facade grant and moving it over for this idea. Um, in the last meeting, um, it was brought up to not call it a facade grant, so we have removed the word facade from all things here, and we're just calling it a micro grant. Twenty-five micro grants for businesses along the main um, business quarter on Main Street, as well as Second Street and Third Street. To be paid out if they fill out this application form to uh, decorate their front windows. If they do not use the entire $200, they have to supply receipts, as well as a check for the difference back to the town. Um, we're encouraging daytime decorations, um, no permits. Um, they have to be fully decorated by November 8th. And um, Tammy Patterson, who has a store on the corner of Main and Third, will be collecting all that and bringing it to the town. Um, inclement weather could affect states, but we give or take. Um, we also uh, talked to the board about above and beyond that. Um, Tammy Patterson um, found a company that has wholesale wreaths. The rest of the board saw this picture, but that is, oh, I forgot that. All right, I wanted to give it to. It's for me. Um, so really pretty 32-inch wreaths to, again, um, everybody will decorate their own windows differently, but everybody that wants to can get one of those wreaths to decorate in the style that they would like, and then we will have a wreath voting contest. We are also, uh, and the board liked that idea as well, to kind of have some cohesiveness and community local engagement. Um, so there would be $5,000, and then a separate $1,178 that the board seemed to like the idea of. Um, we also asked the town to go back to setting up the tree at the south side of the intersection of Third and Main. Um, we are looking into a wholesale tree to purchase as an investment going forward. Unfortunately, Christmas tree costs are really becoming, I can't find the sheet, but that's all. It's on the back of this. Ah, thank you, there we go. Um, yeah, so a 20-foot tree, 3,800, 12-foot tree um, at Sam's Club, 600, a 12-foot tree on the intersection, pretty small. Yeah, she basically said her and her husband would be willing to donate a 20-foot tree from their property, a live tree. Um, you know, the idea is to build on this year to year, so it would be nice to get an artificial tree, but it is what it is. Um, the town of West Cliff was going to look through the basement, I don't know if that's been, you know, able to happen yet, to see what kind of decorations um, are going on. Um, it's not in here, but Kim from K2 Gallery has a children's group locally that she works with, and she's gonna try to get them to do the ornaments, some handmade ornaments for that tree, as rela- as well as on this, one of these uh, event days, there'll be more, there'll be, there'll be an ornament making um, day. I'm sorry, I've been popping my head, I don't know if it'll be the 29th of November or the 6th of December, but there'll be ornaments, if we don't have any in the basement, is what I'm trying to say. Um, we're also gonna make uh, two boxes, Tammy's husband Joe, um, in kind of a fun way, so that besides fielding the calls here at the office, there will be a way for locals to vent, and there'll be two boxes of, I really don't like this tree here, or really love this tree, thanks for bringing it back, and tell us why, so that we will have uh, input from the local people, as well as visitors, as far as, you know, not just the complaint, complainers always have an outfit to complain. People who want to say something nice, don't worry. So, we thought that'd be kind of a fun way to take a little pressure off the office, but also balance the negative and the, some positive. Um, and then, besides that, asking the town of West Cliff, they do anyways, you know, you guys decorate Main Street poles. Um, we would like to have a Santa in the pavilion on tree lighting day. Jones Theater is, has, or will come up with a costume, and we have a gentleman who will play, play Santa to be in the pavilion for the tree lighting day. And so the pavilion and the sidewalk frontage, hopefully there'll, there's enough decorations in the basement to kind of, there's so, you know, we, so much was put into that park that um, you know, we want to take advantage of it, as a community. So, those are the asks kind of summarized from the town. Um, most of that was discussed in last meeting, um, a couple of new little details in there as well. So, yeah, we're, we're basically here today to see if we can vote on the, the monies, and if there's any other details to discuss, I believe, I, I don't know if I've missed anything.
We, uh, I think all those are good, by the way, and we did the tree, um, I don't know, Mark, do you remember that, a few years ago, we did a Third and Main?
A year ago.
Put a hay bale, because people, we, we put up hay bales to sort of block the street off, so people could, whatever. Anyway, people got upset about that, do you remember that?
Yeah.
It was before I've been here, so it was over five years ago, and I've been asking around, and there's talk that we probably can't do that, that's emergency route for CDOT, if there's wrecks or accidents, so they don't really agree with putting a tree there and blocking that street off.
Well, you could put the tree in, but you uh, you just can't put the hay bales from, from the tree to, to the curbs.
Street, yeah. Well, the tree blocks access to get through the tree, street? If it's a big tree.
It'll be a big tree.
Yeah.
Well, can we, can we put, instead of putting it in the middle, perhaps?
There's a.
Through a one lane?
There's a uh, there's a hole, there's a. To, to take the tree. There's already in the, in the street.
I just have a couple of questions. Um, when did this become a thing for CDOT? Because this tree has happened in this town for a lot of years, I mean, not in the last five, but, and they should still be able to come to the stop sign and hang up and head east. I mean, they shouldn't have, where are they cutting through? If they're cutting through, they could cut down Fourth, which has no stop signs headed north and south, so that the fire department can go straight through. So, if they were like having an emergency and really had to get over to 69 South, they could just go straight down Fourth with no, no slowdown, and then hang a left on Hermit and ride on.
I do not have a definite answer for that. I've been asking them on what the rules are, things have changed in the past on, you know, the state highway, having backup plans on routes for emergencies if the road was closed for some reason somewhere. And they have not got back to me on whether it would be allowed, or, you know, or if preferred not to.
One thing you might do, Neil, is just check to see if that receptacle is not covered with asphalt.
It is, it is. The only thing there right now is a manhole for the sewer.
No, 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 that's not a sewer. That is where the tree goes.
Really?
There's actually a concrete.
Okay.
Where, the portion of the sewer that will be concrete underneath there, sits down into there, and then you got the manhole cover on top of it.
Really?
So, it's not.
I'll, I'll cover up to see what's under.
No, don't pop the cover.
Okay, then it's right in the middle, then.
Why can't you put it in Jess Park?
Well, I mean, there's the huge live tree in Jess Park, but we're, we're, we're wanting to um, make the downtown just a festive, lively, and as people drive through on the highway, they stop at that stop sign, and there's, many times in, in travelers' minds, there's a brief moment that if, if, if a downtown is festive and welcoming, go in here for a second, have a cup of coffee, have a burger, maybe buy a shirt. And more income for the people, having businesses, more sales tax for the town, and just a nicer holiday season for the locals. It spreads it more throughout.
So, we have been looking, there's uh, lighted tree ornaments that we could stick on the pole, that would come down from the pole and look like a Christmas tree with lights, and they could decorate around it with ornaments or fake Christmas, you know, things like that, but that would kill each corner with not impede traffic.
Like the, the corners of the, like, all four corners of that?
Yeah, all four corners have light bars.
But it would impair the stop sign.
Probably, and their businesses.
For CDOT, we can't put it on theirs to, to interfere with their sign, ain't you right?
Right, yeah. So, when we, when we tried doing something else, when they had the banners down there, uh, you know, banners actually covered up the stop sign.
No, we can't do that.
Yeah.
No, we cannot cover up any CDOT signs.
So, what happens, Neil, if we just put the tree at Third and, south side of Third, like we, at, like was done for many, many years, but just hasn't been done recently, and CDOT gets upset about that? Because they don't tend to move very quick, I mean, it took us 20 years to get a four-way stop there. I'm just wondering if, you know, we put a tree there, if they're upset, we can deal with that next year.
My understanding is if it's in our parking area, it's okay, as long as it doesn't impede their traffic or their place to put snow when there's snow plowing. So, if it's on the southwest corner of Third, right there in front of uh, Tammy's shop there, and we could probably do that without getting approval.
In the middle of Third Street, on the south side of Third Street, which is technically town of West Cliff.
Uh, they were talking, that would probably be a no-no, because if, for some reason, they can't turn left there to come down Main Street this direction, and they have to detour down Third, come up Rosita, and then round, it's gonna impede their emergency plan.
I, I see what you're talking about. Excuse me, uh, we're not gonna be able to settle this at this meeting, and we have a meeting starting, another meeting starting one. So, I want to conclude this if I can. I'd like to get a motion to approve the funding of these, of these requests, and then we can, I have one other thing I want to accomplish at this meeting before the clock runs out. So, I don't want to truncate all this conversation, because I think it's good, but I, you know, we're, we're running out of time here, so if I get a motion to approve this quest, request.
Do we need, I'm sorry, but there's two requests, one for the $5,000, and then one for the wreaths. So, are you including, including both of those requests in the?
Yes. So, make a motion, somebody.
I'll make a motion to approve the $5,000 for the $200 micro grants for businesses, and the $1,178.25 for the holiday wreaths and hangers, so for a total of $6,178 for the Main Street roundtables and the work that they're doing.
We have a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The other item on the agenda, it's not on the agenda, the other item I, I would like to bring up is we do not have a mayor pro temp. So, I would like to, a nomination for mayor pro temp. I'd like to nominate Kristi Patterson. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
We don't have a vote like that when it wasn't on the agenda?
No, I didn't, really.
We could put it on the agenda for next month.
Yeah. Well, so, we don't have a mayor pro temp until next month. Um, you're gonna be gone next month? I don't have any plans.
Okay.
Sure. I'm sorry?
I can put it on next week.
Okay, well, by that, you may piss me off between now and then.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry then, um, yeah.
And could, can Neil look into this tree thing? Because I really would like to see a tree back at Third and Main.
I, you know, I think in that regard that um, it's our street. CDOT has never approached us about some emergency plan, unless they've done it for Neil, but I've never seen an emergency plan that we should know about as the board, so um, you know, sometimes you don't want to ask questions. Can we have roadwork that needs to be done on Third Street, start?
December? Start in November 1st.
Close the street? I don't think we have any roadwork that needs to be done.
If you all need.
I was down this last year. Yeah. Fence at the end of the runway. So, I would just uh, it's kind of way, I, but I'm the mayor, so I can't just, if we have a plan from CDOT and they don't want us to do that, then we'll have to abide by that. But I'm sure I can talk to them somehow, and uh, um, but, in the meantime, I, I think that we are the.
Do we ask permission or ask forgiveness?
I'm, I'm all about asking for forgiveness, but I just remembering back to the four-way stop thing, and we were able to put stops at Third and Main, you know, basically, and, and across, but, and it, it was like some rule that why we couldn't, why we can only have the two stops, and we couldn't have the ones north and, or I mean, east, on the east and west, and it had to do with touching CDOT property, but Third and Main was fine. So, why all of a sudden are, is CDOT in charge of our Third and Main side of the, of the road?
The uh, I think that tree is far enough back from the intersection, that it's not on CDOT property, you know.
I don't think it is either, but if I understand what Neil is saying correctly, he's saying that they're saying, if they couldn't turn left or right, they would need to be, have an access to go straight across. I'm saying if it's that bad of a situation, and they need to go straight across, they can drop that plow and mow it over, and let's go. I mean, if it's that bad, yeah.
Well, all right, um, so what's the sense of the board on this, to just go ahead and do the tree and ask forgiveness?
I'd like to look at that corner, because that is a, there's a 45 right there where the Western Star building is, where the sidewalk is a lot larger there. You might be able to put it right there at that corner. Just, just drive, drive down there and take a look at that, that, that corner.
I'll do that.
The southwest corner.
But I'm sure in support of a tree there in some capacity.
If we put it there, won't air, if we were to stop sign.
Sign will be permanent.
As till we get our presence.
There's a whole generation of kids that need to seal ornaments off that thing.
And other things on the tree.
Right. So, worst case scenario, are there two parking, are there, there's parking lots on the, on the west side of the town's south-facing Third Street next to that building? Could they not block, could the town not block? If we don't put it in the, I think Third, right in the middle of Third is lovely, like it's, that would be a preference. I think that'd be. If we don't put it in the, I think Third, right in the middle of Third is lovely, like it's, that would be a preference. I think that'd be lovely. But if we can't put in the middle of Third Street, block off two parking spaces, and still have it in the street, but in two parking spaces, which will not be filled for the next six months.
Where are your complaint boxes gonna be?
Now facing traffic, so people can stop and get out of their car, lodge a complaint, and then buy a cup of coffee and off.
I, you know, when we were in Verona, Italy last year, there's a place, still used, it's been there for hundreds of years, it's a wall, it's just a slot. And you can see people's hands oily from, you know, around it. It's called a bitch box.
Yeah.
How you say that in Italian, but it's still used today, and people drop complaints in there.
Let's not give people that option.
I got a picture they wanna see.
I feel like we're gonna have a lock, so that we're required to hand them over to you guys or not. So, so just to really quickly, because we're almost at one o'clock, so asking town of West Cliff to, like, how do you guys feel about the pavilion and the sidewalk frontage of Jess Park? I don't know if you've been able to see what decorations there are or, um.
I think that the use of it for Santa Claus is fine. Now, we have a man, Paul, I can't remember his last name, he's a big guy.
I think that's who it's.
Because he's, he's perfect, and I, I remember, uh, last year, Silver Cliff had their own Santa Claus, we had one at Ace. And some kid told his mother, I like the Santa Claus at Ace a lot better than.
That is one question I have, because I'm in full support of all of this, but, um, is our event stuff the same day as Silver Cliff's? Because that would seem to be a little counterproductive.
We're, we're going to be reaching out to Silver Cliff, to whatever they're doing. Um, it's the town of Willer, uh, Silver Cliff's tax money and stuff, but why not? Like, if they have something, a historic museum up there and their family day, and we're printing a poster anyways, it's more reason for the local and visitors to enjoy it. We will incorporate it.
Yeah, it'd be great if it was like two weekends in a row, or, but there's no reason to pay for two Santas if one is on the same day, then we just direct, you know, so that some people can do all of it.
Well, we're, 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 we're going to make an effort to reach out and see, make sure it's kind of seamless. But as far as the pavilion and the sidewalk edge, decorations, if they're available?
The only decoration I have is lights. I don't have any.
Did you have something around the poles with the green?
Yes, the pole rafts, she already mentioned that we do that.
Yeah, you gotta do the pole doings, so I don't know. One way or another, we'll come up with a tree, because it'll probably be a live tree. And, and, unless somebody finds a twenty-foot tree somewhere, and we'll maybe reapproach you guys if it's a used twenty-foot tree, which I can't imagine. But I find.
I don't think the artificial trees.
What's that?
I don't think artificial, we have a big artificial tree in our, middle of our store. I'm not certain those trees would sustain all heavy wind that we get this time of year.
Artificial or, or real?
Artificial. I'm just saying, I, and they may.
What, what, in the past, was it always a live tree? Okay, well, Tammy and Joe are willing to donate one from their properties.
And I'm thinking that the last year that the tree was down on Main, and I wanna say this was around two thousand eighteen, like that winter, um, that businesses made their dec-, businesses made decorations, kids made decorations, and it was all like organic decorations, if you will, like whole-made decorations versus just a bunch of plastic. Yeah, not for maze, I mean, you know what I'm, but I think originally it had been ornaments like that, but then it, all those maybe are gone, and so it turned into.
It's for maze, we could probably get a donate.
Yeah, we might be able to get a deal.
So, so as far as looking at the corner, I'm just rushing, because I know you guys have to move on, but so as far as looking at the corner and then having a board vote of, do we do it in the middle of the road or on the sidewalk of the road? Like, do we remit on that? Do we need to get back on the agenda for next month to decide where the tree goes in the middle or the side or the?
I think we can decide that. I mean, I'll take a look at it, Randy will, and so forth, Bob, or whoever, we all can do it. And just give feedback.
Okay, yeah, all right.
We can get it going.
Okay.
You know, you're, now you're pushing.
I think that just so that side of the tree, diameter of the tree doesn't interfere with the crosswalk going, you know, across from, you know, between that, so. And I'm pretty sure that man, tree hole, is, is, is south far enough, so that doesn't interfere with that, so.
So you're, you're hoping for the middle of the street and Third?
Yeah.
And you're hoping for the middle of Street and Third, and?
Yeah.
You're hoping middle of Street and Third, and you're a little, oh no, you're in the middle of the street. I believe two of you can go down there.
Together.
Together, plus Neil, so, because I'm not advertising that as a public meeting.
I just want to throw out there that it's really nice to walk down to Main Street and look at things like a tree hole, and then go and have dinner and a beer. I might have done that a few times, but not to look at a tree.
Neil?
Can I ask a question? When do you plan on lighting up this tree and having the tree in place? Is that when we light up the town, which is usually the Saturday after Thanksgiving?
Well, I don't know. I know where it used to be. It used to be the day after Thanksgiving, but yeah, that day, right there. It's Saturday after Thanksgiving, but I don't know what these guys, Bianca, what do you?
Well, well, from what we understand, Small Business Saturday is the day after Thanksgiving, the Saturday after Thanksgiving, and there's events planned for that day. We thought the tree lighting of the park was December sixth for some reason. That's when the craft fairs are, that's when the, um, parade, it used to be, if there's no parade, we're gonna see if we can do a standing parade, we're gonna try. So we were under the understanding, I think, that it was December sixth. Um, but it's up to you guys, whenever, I mean.
I mean, first Saturday of December, is that normally when we do it, right? First Saturday of December, I mean, December.
Yeah. Yeah, because we, we do have some things, we're trying to liven up downtown for Small Business Saturday on November twenty-ninth, and then December sixth, um, is the big tree in the park lighting.
Light up the town.
So we could do the one at Third Street, whatever you guys, whatever you, we could do one on Small Business Saturday, and then we could do the big one in the park, December sixth.
Kind of rather it all be on December sixth, just because I will say that blocking off Third Street for, I think it's okay to do it for the month of December, but to do it any longer, it thinks kind of pushing hard.
Yep. Okay.
Okay, so we can, we can just make sure that that's all, um.
Okay, well, we'll talk about it. What kind of notice?
I mean, it's an extra week.
They have to request shut, closing a street.
If we, if we could put it.
They just need to file a street closure form, and there's a two hundred fifty-dollar damage deposit that's refundable.
Does that, we have to have it at a board meeting?
No.
To request?
No.
Or Bianca, just FYI, request to close the street. That has to be a public notice.
They just need to file the application.
Okay, the deposit.
Like an event kind of thing?
Yeah, we've got it here at the office. We're gonna get a few more of our ducks in a row, and then when we, you know, get all our details, we'll put in an event application for the twenty-ninth and for the sixth, and then. Wait, I will, I think, I think.
I'll just, I'll be in contact with you and get, get you that application.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you all for your time, and I guess just call or just.
Yes, ma'am. Great ideas coming out of this.
Well, the motion to adjourn, make a motion to adjourn.
I can.
Uh, the move to approve to adjourn, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Now, let's get started with the budget workshop, which is the workshop, we don't want to have any, uh, sorry, you send workshops.
I gotta start.
So, um, the budget workshop, uh, there's no public comment, correct? Yeah, you gotta keep, you gotta keep your mouth shut, as usual. I just wanted to say that before, you know.
Yeah.
Um, public is welcome, but, you know, it's, can imagine what it would be, it'd take forever, so. Public is welcome, can do this. Do we have a host standing down?
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Um, first thing I wanna ask is, do we have our revenue? The latest month?
It's the same one as when, that was in last packets.
The last packet right here.
I have a problem getting the Zoom started on this.